Um, it is seven PM. We have a quorum. I'm gonna call us into open session. Thanks to all for attending. Committee members, I recommend that minutes pertaining to the job performance, character, or physical and mental health of a person or persons superintendent search update remain sealed.
So.
Uh, committee members, you're muted. Catherine, that was, you moved it. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So we have motion and second, uh, discussion. Thank you, those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Recusal, recusal? No? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, next one's you, Jane.
Okay. I recommend that minutes pertaining to potential litigation statewide transportation invoices remain sealed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So Craig moved that and Catherine seconded that. Any discussion? Thank you, those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any recusals? No? Thank you. Uh, that brings us to the disclosure of executive session votes.
Uh, we had two votes in executive session. Uh, the first vote was to accept the exec- uh, executive session minutes of April thirtieth, twenty twenty superintendent search update. Uh, it's eleven, eleven in favor, zero opposed, zero accusers, zero, um, abstentions. In favor, Callahan, Abbott, Chambers, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, and Stall. Uh, the second vote was to return to regular session to say hello to you folks. It was twelve in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, zero recusals. In favor, Callahan, Abbott, Chambers, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister, and Stall. Back to you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, we are now over to Jane for recognition.
Please join me in congratulating the following. High school students selected to the senior all-state chorus, Melanie Bowger, grade twelve, Catherine Fugere, grade twelve, and Bryn McCarthy, grade eleven. High school students selected to the junior all-state chorus, John Bowger, Bowger, grade nine, and Maisy Datson, grade nine. CTC graphic arts student Caitlin Burns on her selection as the Skills USA two thousand twenty judge pin design winner. Also for Skills USA, we have career essentials, assessment certificate earner in individuals. For welding, we have Dale Allard and Owen Bremen. For culinary arts, we have Ariane and Agnes. For criminal justice, Danielle Abbe, Alicia Kinney. For carpentry, Chris Livin, Lance Delbonis. Commercial baking, Marissa Boss. Graphic design, Ally Buckley and Kalia Van Horn. Technical drafting, Riley DeSorci, Sean Goulet, Preston Simkins. Nail care assessment, Emily Fish, Connor Pierce. Electrical construction wiring, Robert Impalatieri and Matthew Palmer. Customer service, Vera Jenkins, Judkins and Leah Kelvington. Architectural drafting, Brendan O'Rourke and Kayden Wilson. Computer maintenance technology, Mark Whitman, and nurse assisting Nicole Regen. For our Skills USA career essentials, assessment certificate earner team events. For crime scene investigation, Dreiden Ciency, Hunter Humiston, Chelsea Lopes, Jacob Lineker, Kyle Merritt, Joshua Smithy, Jas- Jasmine Babett, Sabrina Rubenstein, and Victoria Smith. For Skills USA Rhode Island championships, medal winners. Criminal justice, we have Danielle Abbe received silver. Alicia Kinney bronze in aesthetics. And then Krista Holland and model Sarah Felicetti received the bronze in nail. For nail care, we have Emily Fish and model Abigail Standevan received silver. For employees of the month for February, Ashway School Custodian John Zilsky and Cala Custodian Karen Johnston for their work with our clinical day students. March employees of the month, we have Richmond School Special Educator Lori Gigliotti for all she has done to service the needs of her students. And for April, we have our two technology fellows, Jessica Jeremiah and Renee Rosovich for all their assistance with distance learning. I also like to congratulate our high school humanities specialist Dana Hall, who last Thursday was, um, received the Golden Apple Award. And our own high school principal Craig McKenzie. Last week, he was named the Rhode Island Secondary Principal of the Year for two thousand twenty.
Outstanding, outstanding. Uh, next we have, uh, public forum. For those of you who are online, um, at the bottom of your screens, there is a participants icon. If you click on that, the participants list pops up on your right-hand side. At the bottom of that list, there's a button, uh, that says raise hand. Uh, if you would like to speak, uh, hit that button and I will call on you. Please identify yourself and town in which you reside, uh, and then ask your question. Uh, so if there's anybody from the public who has, um, a question or comment for the committee that is not an agenda item for this evening, please let me know. Okay, thank you. Um, on to business.
Okay, item A, FY twenty-one budget approval process update. So for the past few months, I've been working with our attorney, with John Anderson and, um, with Susan. And we've been working, uh, trying to coordinate with the state board of elections. We've communicated with the three towns, um, also with the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. And we've all been trying to work on, um, what do we do since we had the April fourteenth referendum and we couldn't have the vote on the budget? So one of the things was this draft resolution that's in your packet, um, that was sent to the governor. Um, and that was work that John did in order to, um, try to see if we could get a exec- an executive order that would allow for the regional school committee to vote on the budget. The Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns was working on something similar that would allow town councils to vote on town budgets. So we felt, um, that didn't necessarily work with a regional school district. And so developed some language related to the regional schools. And we worked together with Foster, um, Gloucester, and with Exeter West Greenwich to develop that language. So that's one thing that we've done. It's, um, there hasn't been action on that as of today. And, um, it's still a work in progress. Uh, we don't have a specific, um, answer yet from the state board of elections or from these groups as to how we're gonna go about approving our budget. But we do know that the three towns, Charlestown, Richmond, and Hockington, right now, in their town budgets have the amount of our adopted budget. They have that in their budgets. And, um, they have reached out to us that they're moving forward to work on how to get those budgets approved. So that's basically an update as to where we are with the status. And then, um, Susan has, um, prepared some information, which just, and if you wanted to speak to that, Sue? About, um, you know, if we were a level funded, if the budget wasn't approved?
So the way that the process will work is, um, I gave you a chart that lists, um, our current budget with that percentage increase. Then what was adopted by the school committee, which had a bottom line increase of one point nine five. And the percentages, of course, are dictated by October one enrollment. If we were to be level funded, we, the percentages would still be dictated by the October one enrollment. So the bottom line would be the same as the bottom line we have currently for this fiscal year. However, the amounts each town pays will change due to the fact that their enrollment shifted. So you can see originally Charlestown had, um, a negative point zero six increase with your adopted budget. If we were to level fund, they would go down negative one point nine six. Richmond had an increase of one point three eight. They would, um, end up with a negative point five six. Hockington had an increase of three point nine, and they would have an increase of one point nine two, with the overall increase being zero.
And also, um, you know, I think it's uncertain right now where we are with state aid. And so another chart that Susan did for you on that document just shows that, um, the state aid that we put in our budget for FY twenty-one. But if the state aid was level funded to FY twenty, um, then that difference would be a, a negative of eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. So that's one potential. So really, right now, we, we don't have a lot of information as to what's going to happen. We're just trying to keep on top of, um, the, what could, what could happen and to be prepared. Another, um, document you'll see in this, under this item is something called preliminary information on potential reentry costs for fiscal year twenty-one. So another thing, um, that our administrative team has done, has started to, uh, and through our meetings across the state and also through what we're reading, um, federally, we've started to list some of the things that potentially could be cost as we reenter. And right now, we don't know what that is. It's very uncertain. It's in the future. Um, I know at the state level, there is a committee that's being formed to, um, with representatives from the various stakeholder groups to talk about a reentry plan for schools. So it hasn't even met yet, or maybe they've met once and they're just starting that work. But some of the conversations have been about that there might be additional costs to meet the increased academic needs of students who might have struggled during distance learning. And that could be general ed students or students, um, with disabilities who may require compensatory education. There's also costs related to social emotional needs that students and staff might be experiencing that might increase, um, especially as we reenter. Certainly, there have been additional costs now for maintenance staff and supplies. And we would, um, anticipate that cost would continue to increase next year just to be able to keep up with Department of Health cleaning and disinfection, just disinfecting standards, along with equipments for nurses. Um, and there's just a lot of discussion about what are gonna be the requirements in classrooms. And again, we don't know, and it's very premature, but we just have to start to consider what that might look like. So will there be smaller class sizes that are required? Will we have to think about how many students can be on the bus at the same time? And will we, we will have to consider, um, how to manage that? Um, we have large lunch, lunchrooms in the high school and in the middle school. Will we have to consider students eating lunch in the classroom to be able to limit that size? So all different things to consider. Um, and, um, you can see on this list, this is what, again, we started to brainstorm, but we, we don't have any definite numbers yet or even a definite plan. I can tell you as a district, like I did in February when all of this started, I put together a district crisis team that involves stakeholders from the towns, including the EMA directors and the doc, our, our school doctor, um, and others. So we are going to start a new committee now, um, and starting to plan for reentry. So that will happen. Our first meeting will be in the next few weeks, so we can start to think about that. But those are just all potential, um, scenarios as we look to the budget for next year.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine, Juisty?
So just to clarify, what has been proposed here are just ideas. I know that there was, I had heard a little bit of concern from people in the public thinking that they, we were moving forward with this resolution. There would be no vote. But I'd just like to reiterate, these are ideas that are out there. Um, and we have a chance to discuss this again before we would move forward with any of these options, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, I feel that the options are not in our hands at this time. You know, it's, it's really gonna be determined by the state board of elections, um, or the governor. If she decides to, to do any executive orders. I don't, I don't feel that, um, there is anything right now that we can do. But John Anderson, if, I know he had to kind of go on and off, but if he wanted to add, he might have, um, any other additional information.
Can't hear you.
Agree with, I agree with what Jane's saying, that this is ultimately up to the governor and, and the state board of elections. Um, and frankly, um, the League of Town Cities and Towns is gonna have a lot to say. And something has to be done in terms of the ability to approve budgets. Um, the draft of the document that you saw in front of you is just how it's done across the state line in Connecticut. And that is the solution that was come up with in, um, Connecticut. Um, I frankly can't predict there. For the League of Cities and Towns, for example, is talking about having town meetings in August and simply issuing the same tax bills as last year, um, in, in June. On the other hand, I'm aware that, um, you know, Charlestown has asked for a polling place on June first. Um, there are costs and expenses that are involved with that. The state is running an election on June second. On the other hand, the state is paying to mail out a ballot to every single Rhode Islander and to pay the postage to have every single ballot come back, um, and so forth. There is still, um, you know, staffing issues that are involved. There's still frankly, you know, you don't wanna catch COVID, get, uh, the coronavirus while you're standing in line at the polling place, but you also don't wanna get it if you're one of the people who are counting the ballots, um, as well. This is very, very, very much in flux. We are trying to come up with, um, upper, you know, options. The League of Cities and Towns has proposed, among other ideas, that the majority of cities and towns, the town councils set the budget. The, um, it's the minority rule to have financial town meetings, but to do that, but to, um, have a financial, you know, have the councils do it statewide this one year. Um, it's a work in progress, and I think in part it's driven by how many people can get together. You know, everybody thought the governor was gonna go to ten this week, she didn't.
Okay. Thanks, John. Uh, Catherine, and then George.
Sure, just to finish at my point, um, I do think it's important to recognize too, I see that we have a lot of people on this call, which is fantastic. Um, I'd also like to point out that even if this budget is level funded, um, percentages are changing. So even if we go back, the town of Hockington is still gonna pay more money regardless of whether we level fund this budget or not. Um, I do think it's important for people to recognize that, that it's enrollment based. That doesn't change pandemic or not, um, that we are going to see an increase in the town of Hockington specifically, whether we level fund this budget or not. Thank you.
George?
Yes, I, I'm not in favor of this resolution. I think the people should be allowed to vote in some fashion, safe fashion. And, uh, as a default, I would, uh, revert to last year's budget.
I said, thank you. Um, so just for clarity, there is no action for the committee on this tonight. This is in information. Um, I think you've heard, um, from, uh, our attorney who's working closely with, uh, numerous agencies to try and figure out just exactly how we can hold an election. I think it is, um, the, the committee itself. Our desire is that our towns residents are given the opportunity to voice their opinion on the ballot for this budget. That's our position. We are looking at options if we do not have that opportunity, uh, before us. So I think that that's, that's something that should be clear on that. Uh, any additional questions from the committee members? Thank you. This brings us to business letter B.
So this resolution, um, this is a resolution to support public education. And the resolution was included as an FYI in your last packet on April fourteenth. I recommend approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Linda is the second side. Catherine moved the motion and, uh, Linda Lyle seconded it. Thank you. This is now open for discussion to committee members. Uh, George Abbott?
Is this different from the executive order?
Uh, it is. So this is, um, well, actually, John, why don't you explain to us what the resolution is? Or Jane, if you'd prefer.
I'm gonna defer to Jane, cause I don't have a co- a copy of it. If I remember correctly, Jane, this is the resolution that's going around the entire state about public education, correct?
This is asking the governor to fund education aid as, um, initially presented to the legislature back in January. So the numbers that are in our budget for our education aid for next year, we're just asking her to keep to that funding.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. I was just, I didn't wanna confuse it with the, uh, executive.
No. Thank, thanks, George. That's actually a good, good point to make. The, the support or the, the motion is to support, uh, public aid, um, education resolution. And that's just so that, um, the governor holds, uh, to the, the commitments made and the legislator, legislature holds to commitments made already. Any other committee members have comments on this? Uh, Clay?
Uh, so in a general sense, I get this. Um, it's essentially every, um, school across the state's gonna say, keep, send me the money that you already promised us. Um, but the whole world changed a couple of months ago, and we already know this isn't gonna happen. Um, so now it's just a question to me in my mind about, do we all stand there with our hands out? Everyone's got their hand out right now, and, and it's just, um, not something I, I prefer to do. I think there needs to be, um, sacrifice all the way around the board. And I think it's gonna hit us whether we want to or not. Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Any other comments from the committee? Then I'm gonna move this to vote. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor of supporting, um, the resolution, uh, for public education? Say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Um, I know I'm gonna have, uh, opposed. I have Clay. Any other, um, proposition? Do we have any abstentions? Any recusals? No? Okay, thank you. Letter C.
All right, so this was a item requested at the last meeting, uh, or I think, sorry, two meetings ago. Um, for an FY twenty budget summary cost savings due to the pandemic. So, um, what you'll notice in item C one. Um, and again, I'll probably defer to Susan because she's the one who put this together. Um, so Susan, do you wanna present it?
So what we did was we looked at items that we know for a fact. We have stopped spending. For instance, we know there will be no field trips the rest of this school year. Uh, we know that there will be no state testing, so therefore we will not need food for students to have state testing. Um, so this first section of, with the two hundred and seventy-two thousand, those are known numbers. Spring coaches, uh, different stipends for detention, athletic transportation substitutes. Um, so those are pretty much known. Then we go to the next section, and these are too early to estimate. I have calculated the approximate daily cost for both the Ocean State Transportation Company that does our in-district transportation and the statewide transportation, uh, private schools and out-of-district transportation. And that comes to a daily cost of about twenty-four thousand dollars. So I didn't multiply it out yet because there are still some unknowns regarding that, but that would be your daily cost. Someone had requested the savings on police fire. We are still looking at possibilities regarding graduation where we may need some police on the campus. So I don't have a cost for that. As far as utilities and rubbish, those bills are usually thirty to sixty days arrears. So we haven't gotten bills yet that would actually show us the type of savings we would be incurring. When it comes to costs, we have spent approximately seventeen thousand dollars to date on PPE, cleaning supplies, additional copies for the packets that are going home, especially at the elementary level, and mailings as far as mailing out report cards and different items that have now had to be mailed home. Uh, unemployment, we received our first unemployment bill today. Uh, so that is still an ongoing number that we are, it's too early to estimate. And again, as we discussed at the last meeting, because we are self-insured, it is still too early to know what the actual cost will be associated with COVID. Um, and the fact that we are self-insured, we are responsible for all of these fees that are waived by Blue Cross. Uh, the district will pick up those fees. And then we also have some potential loss of revenue. I looked at these regarding what we budgeted for revenue and what we've taken in so far. So regarding preschool, we will be short about twenty thousand dollars over what we budgeted. The before-school program, many of you, um, are aware that parents can come up to an hour prior to school and drop their children off for a small fee, and we will watch them. Uh, that's only about four hun- three hundred and ninety dollars. A bigger issue that has come up when we've done a little bit more research is when it comes to food service, we, what I discussed at the last school committee meeting is bills that we get from Chart Wells. We have not broken even yet on that. So we are still in the hole. But what is more concerning to us is the lower amount of state and federal reimbursements that we will be, we are not seeing at the moment. So compared to last year, right now, we're running about a fifty thousand dollar deficit in our food service program. And then the last item on this particular list is the sale of computers versus what we budgeted is about thirty-five thousand dollars. And because of COVID, we, uh, may be keeping computers a little bit longer than we had originally expected to, which will also lower the revenue in sales.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have the Bill Day and then Clay.
Oh yeah, so I have a couple, two questions here. Uh, I noticed, uh, building and ma- maintenance outside, uh, grounds maintenance outside vendor. You're projecting a savings there, or could you explain that as to less mowing, uh?
Yes, what, um, what I did was, because there are no spring sports and because, um, our, without all the students on campus, we are having our maintenance staff and, um, do the mowing for us. So you had approved a grounds maintenance bid a couple of school committee meetings ago. I have suspended that until at least August fifteenth. And our own staff will be mowing the fields. So therefore you won't be incurring the cost of an outside vendor.
Great, I, uh, I appreciate that because it is, is a way to keep our staff employed and, and productive, uh, through the year. The second question is, uh, am I right in assuming that we are keeping, uh, records, uh, pertaining to the virus? And hopefully we could submit a bill, uh, up the, up the line to see if we could. to see if we could recover some of this money for the PPEs and stuff like that?
Yes. Every purchase order that we have written to date, we have notated with the word COVID on it. And we are making copies of those purchase orders and then copies of the invoices as they come in. So that we currently have that running list. As soon as we are able to know how to fill out the forms correctly, know which forms we're supposed to be filling out and which forms we don't qualify for, we will have all the documentation ready to go and be able to submit it. So every dime we are spending has been notated. The other item that we are doing now is we're being told by a number of our vendors, order supplies now. If you think you're going to need them in the fall, order them now because they're already on back order till late July, August. And even at that, sometimes what happens is the federal government comes in and what the vendor thought they were going to be able to give to you has been snatched up. So we are trying to preorder, but as Jean alluded to earlier, we have no idea what these costs would be. If we were to go back to school and every single person had to wear a face mask, we would, I mean, granted, hopefully people would bring their own, but technically between students and staff, we have over 3,000 people a day at Charahoe. So when we started buying face masks, they were well under 50 cents a piece. They're now over a dollar a piece.
Well, that's a great reason why you're here and continue to assist us in this problem. So I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Clay?
Susan, just a clarifying question. The savings for transportation, that's normal transportation. I assume you took their total contract and divided by 180?
No, what I did was I took their monthly bills. I looked at how many days we were billed for in that specific month. And that, I came up with the daily cost for that. I didn't include over miles. I didn't include over hours or gasoline.
Okay.
Because those were costs that we wouldn't be incurring at that, this particular time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Or Sue? Item C1? No? Okay. That brings us to item C2, payment of stipends. Jane?
So this item was requested by George Abbott. What you'll see on here for the list of the stipends, many of them are annual stipends. So I went and met with the principals, mostly middle school, yeah, middle school and high school because those, you'll notice are most of the stipends on here, with Susan Rogers and Kristen Merritt. And we met and we went through and discussed every single stipend and whether or not we should be paying it or not. And again, like I said, many of them are annual stipends and the work has happened and it has continued. Once we went into distance learning, for example, the National Honor Society is still planning a National Honor Society induction and still working with students. Some of the clubs, like the robotics club, that actually already finished that those competitions happened. So we went through it and there are some things that you'll notice, like bus duty. Those are hourly types of stipends. So that hourly pay did stop in March and that's why you will see a savings there for bus duty, for ES, for detention supervision, fitness center, and so on. Again, those are hourly stipends. The real stipends that I think are in question are the coaches. So for spring coaching, we did not start the season with, with games. However, I met with Mike Shields, the athletic director, and he spoke to me about the work that the coaches have done prior to the season beginning. And he estimates that to be about 30 hours. That includes attendance at the Charahoe and Rhode Island Interscholastic League spring sports meetings. That's six hours. Preseason inventory and equipment prep that the coaches do with Mike prior to the season beginning, holding team meetings in the month of February, the end of February, beginning of March, meeting with team captains to discuss the goals, watching game film, attending clinics. So again, he, in my opinion, was very easily able to justify that there had been about 30 hours of work by each coach prior to the season beginning, out of about 200 hours that we worked together to estimate that would be the full position. So therefore, that's how we came up with the 15%. So tonight I would like to recommend approval to pay the spring coaches 15% of their stipend as per the attached payment of stipends list.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So the motion was moved by Lisa. Is that correct, Lisa? Thank you. And it was seconded by David Stahl. Thank you. This is now open for discussion. I see no hands. I am closing discussion then. I'm going to move this vote. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Craig Luza abstain? Okay. Thank you. Any others? No. And then recusals. And then for committee members, just so you know, I can't see everybody at the, at the same time. So if you do have an abstention or recusal or something, please unmute yourself and, and voice that.
Craig, Craig did abstain? Craig Luza?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
I had to step out during the presentation.
Okay. Motion passes. This brings us to business letter D.
Okay. Attached is a list of school improvement teams for each bill. So per your new policy, which states that as a school committee, you shall review the membership composition of each school improvement team. And should you determine that the membership selected by the school is not representative, you shall direct the principal to reopen the application process and appoint additional members to achieve proper representation. So again, per the new policy, the, each of the schools held their selection period and they all had meetings. And I know there was school committee representation on each of the school sit when they developed who the membership would be. And in front of you is the list of the membership for each of the schools, school improvement teams for the coming school year.
Okay. Thank you. I have questions from committee members. So let's go through some questions first. Bill Day and then David Stahl.
Don Technologies getting me. About that. Yeah, I have some concerns of a couple of them. I think they're a little overloaded with teachers and staff. And I'd like to see a couple of them revised there. Richmond Elementary School has got nine teachers and staff out of a total of 13. I think that's a little, little excessive. And I know if you can't go out and bring parents in, but I think we need to pare down the number of teachers and staff on there. The rise building, Tom, I know you're on here. I love you, but you know, unless it's your father here, the Tom Purney, you're, you're, you're down here as a business community member, but you're also the employee or one of the key members of the Cala building. So I just think that's a little, little difficult because that's 11 members, I mean, seven members out of 11 people on this committee. It's just, I, there's a couple of other ones here that, that I'll let somebody else speak to if they want to. But when you, when you've got this kind of disparity, I'm not sure that the teams are going to be really a community based, which is, I think, the, the reason why these teams are supposed to be set up.
I think so. David Stahl?
I would agree with, with Bill on that. And I think those should be looked at again, those that are not evenly weighted. My, my comment before Bill's though was, I was with the Ashway Elementary Group in their meeting and Jeff Scannepieco, principal there, did a great job of really trying to recruit a good balanced team. And I felt really good about that one, that it's, it's great. And we found a community volunteer through the, the Ashway, Hopkinton Recreation Organization. And so I felt really good about that one and really liked the process. So I wanted to commend Principal Scannepieco on that. It's really good. But I agree with you.
Okay. Craig Luza and then Linda Lyle.
I agree wholeheartedly what Dave and Bill have said, but I also realize this is the beginning. This is the first time we've done something of this nature, not just Charahoe, but across the state. So I would hope that those schools, and I have quite a few here with percentage, I always hope it's going to be more 50/50. But at the high school and middle school levels, you're, you have two additional people per school, humanities department and STEM department. But why wouldn't we just count them in the ratios with the teachers and administrators? And that still brings their numbers up pretty high. So I just emphasize to the principals to, we understand, but please try to get some moms and dads and get more people from the public to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. I'm going to, Jane, do you have a comment reply in there? And then I have Linda Lyle, Lisa MacRusso and Clay Johnson.
So the reason for the additional people at the high school and middle school is actually, that's part of the legislation and also part of our policy that at the secondary level, you have to have a department head or content leader for the humanities and for the STEM. So you know, you're right, they could go under teacher, but what I wanted to show on this chart is that we were following the policy because it is new and it is kind of complex. And I wanted to make sure it was clear that those roles were being filled because that is part of what's required by legislation. And the other part of your policy is that what you had decided that you wanted no more than 50% to be one particular group. So that's another reason why I put it, the information in this format so that you could see that there's not one group that's more than 50%. And a group is defined as, you know, teachers are a group, ESP was a group. So that was just to try to make sure that we were following the policy.
Thank you, Jane. Linda Lyle?
Thanks Chair. Just a point of clarification, Jane, you were reading the policy to us and you said that if we're, we're not, we're not happy about the, the balance of the committee members that we were, who's to go back and speak with the building administrator? Is that something we do directly? Is that something that you, we do through you?
I think that would be something that you would do through me at this meeting, that you would be directing the principal to reopen the application process and appoint additional members to achieve. I mean, the representation again is, you know, it says proper representation. To me, that means the representation outlined in your policy, but you may have a different take on that.
Follow up Chair? Just a follow up. Jane, are you going to share what we're sharing with you tonight with the administration? Or you feel at this point that the, the representation is, is appropriate at this point? It's, it's appropriate?
I, I will share what you asked me to. So I just think as a committee,
Yes.
I want to make sure there's consensus that, you know, you want me to go back and say, okay, Richmond Elementary School, we want you to have, I'm not sure if it, if it's less teachers or you want more parents. You know, I, I've heard the comments from individual members. If you want me to take that back, I can do that. I know that each of you sit on a team also. So that team would need to reconvene and you are members of that team. So you could also share that input, but I'll be glad to go back and share what I've heard.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. Lisa MacRusso?
So I just want to encourage the school committee to accept the CMS team as proposed. So I was in that meeting and we did, we met all of the categorical requirements in the policy, but that particular team really took it a step further. And we had conversations and discussions about representation from a multitude of groups and identities and intersection of identities in middle school. And Mr. Zenyan went out and took the feedback from that meeting and made some pre-targeted recruitment and improved the composition of that group even beyond what is required by policy. So what you cannot see in print is that it is actually a very diverse group of representation from a number of different identities that we would want represented at the middle school. So I just wanted to share that because you can't tell from the, from the names. And I'd ask you to just go ahead and support that one tonight.
Understood. Thank you. Clay Johnson?
So I guess my question is for Jane, what is the number that's in parentheses after each name?
Oh, they could apply for a one or two year term. Thank you.
Got you. Perfect. Thank you.
Bill, Bill Day?
My suggestion would be that particularly the Cala building and Richmond School staff be approached and see if there's not willingness for them to, to step down from that committee. They're still going to have input into the school at a day to day basis. They can, they can interact with the other staff members and, and have them carry forward ideas. And so this would keep this thing going, other than try to recruit parents that may not be willing to be recruited and therefore cause this team not to be as proactive as most of the other teams. I don't have really a problem. Most of the other teams, middle school is very close. You know, the rest of the schools are below or average 50%. So my suggestion would be to, to talk with those two, principal and the director and, and see if they couldn't get some people to step, step aside. And certainly, seven out of 11 for Cala is, 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 is way too, too off balance. Thank you.
Thank you. I have George Abbott and then Mira as well. So George, then Mira.
Yes, in favor of, in line with what Bill just said, in favor of more community members participating.
Thank you. Mira? And then Jane?
I, the very first comment that Bill Day made, I wholeheartedly agree with. I think there was a little bit of overload with the proportion of the teachers. However, as a member of the CIT selection committee for the Richmond Elementary, I have a clear feeling that the community wasn't fully aware. That's the only explanation of the possibilities of the changes. That's the only explanation I can have for the kind of lack of, kind of parent. kind of parents trying to join in. I know Richmond Elementary is a very active community as far as the parents' participation goes. And I think for the next year, we probably should be a little bit more proactive. I don't know if advertising is the right word, but maybe announcing the availability or, and the new role, actually, of the school improvement teams in the whole education process. I think that will change the proportion just naturally. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane?
I just want to say for Cala and whatever you decide. But I did reach out to Ms. Ross twice to ask if she could work to recruit a different business and a community member. And she had reached out to about five different people, and she just was not successful. I know that there's also a CAB, a Comprehensive Board, that meets related to Cala because of their Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And on that committee, there are community members. And I just think it's, it's a lot of commitment of time, and they just couldn't do both. But I'll certainly bring that back to her, and she will try again. And I would ask if anyone that's listening, since we have 50 participants this evening so far, which is amazing, and anybody is in the community or the business and might be interested in serving on the Charahoe Alternative Learning Academy School Improvement Team as a business and a community member, that please feel free to email Director Jeanne Ross.
Thank you, Jane. So I have Catherine Juisty, please.
Thank you. At what point, Jane, do we have to take the committees as they're formed? So what timeframe are you looking? It sounds like some school committee members want to bring this back to the schools, have them work on it further. What's the timeline? I'm very happy with Hope Valley's composition. It was thoughtful and well-done. So I'd hate to see everybody held up because there are some where we're trying to get a little bit more participation. So do you have a sense of the timeline?
I mean, the timeline is to form, is we're right on the timeline, which was to form the committees for May. And I know that many of them have set tentative dates, but, you know, pending approval this evening from the school committee. So I don't see why the others couldn't start. And it would just be Richmond and Cala, from what I'm hearing, that you would like to see them take a second look at their membership composition. I would like just a little more understanding with Richmond, what exactly you'd like, only because they do meet the criteria that 50%, less than 50% are teachers, six out of the 13. So just what would you like? Would you like to see less teachers? Would you like to see more parents, more business and community, all of that? Just a little more to take back.
Thanks, Jane. So I have Bill Day, and then Craig Luza.
Richmond School has nine members that are teachers or ESP. So, you know, you can, you can split it any way you want to put it. But there are nine people on that committee that are employees of that school district. And as far as Cala goes, like I said, I love Tom Purney. He does a great job over there. But if you count him as a, as a community person, that gives you everybody except for one parent and four students on that committee at Cala. So it's overloaded, it's over heavy, you can spin it any way you want it. But I don't believe this is what the intent of this is.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. I have Craig Luza, and then Barbara Capalbo.
You know, in spirit, I agree with Bill. But I think we're in a unique situation right now. This was forced on us. Then we got some pandemic. And I think we should be patient enough to wait for some of these administrators to reach out and try to get some more people on board. But that doesn't mean we should just not do this. So that's how I feel about the subject.
Thanks, Craig. Barbara? If you're speaking, I can't hear you.
Chair, the functionality for people that call in the meeting is not quite as obvious as when we're on Zoom. So I suspect that's what's happening.
Yeah, I assume so as well. Is she, I'm able to, let me see if I can find her on here. Okay, I don't see her. Do you know the?
Yeah, Chair, do you see a number that ends in 0018?
I do.
Okay.
Will you please unmute, or Jane, will you unmute 4014580018?
Yeah, I just did. Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you and welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I have a comment. I think the conversation is really interesting, and I think I have to agree with Mr. Day. With COVID-19 and the possibility that the students may have to learn at home at different times during the year, I think this coming year, you really need the public input as parents because they're expected to assist the teachers, and it's not something they're trained to do. So I think it's really crucial that whenever possible, the public has as much input as possible on these school teams that they're instituting so that we can work in conjunction with the teachers and the administrators or whomever is on the staff. But at times, and we've certainly learned that over the last couple of weeks, the parents are really struggling to become teachers to help their children, both on a technological level, but also on a learning level, while many of them are still trying to work from home. So I have to agree with Mr. Day. Certainly, you want to keep as much of the public as possible on these teams, especially in this pandemic, as, I'm sorry. You'll hate me for this. Craig has just brought up as well. I think it's just really important, this is a new thing, but especially with the pandemic, we need as much public input since they may end up being the teaching staff in the home base, and it's very difficult for a lot of the parents. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Good luck with it all.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Sheila Grover next.
Good evening. I just was curious as to, I can't quite put my fingers on the requirements for the sit teams. But why are there so many teachers on Richmond Elementary School? I mean, it is, it does seem like there's a very long list of just straight-up teachers there. And I do think that when we were talking about what the requirements would be, that was, you know, why we put the proportions in. And it just seems to me that maybe we didn't quite delineate exactly how, you know, maybe it would be smarter to just say, you know, there's four teachers or four people that are employed by that school building or the school system that should be allowed in each one. Maybe the problem is it just needs a little retooling so that it's not so muddy. But I definitely think that Richmond School, something's up there because you're absolutely right. There, it is a very active, Mira was saying, is very active. And there should be a lot more parents in there. Or if you can't get more parents, just pare down some of those teachers. It just seems excessive to me.
Thank you, Sheila. So, committee, hearing the dialogue that we've had on this, it's really centering around Cala and Richmond Elementary. I would like to move this forward in the sense of approving the high school, the middle school, Hope Valley, Ashway, and Charles Town. Are any committee members challenging those compositions? I do not see that. So I believe we do have to vote to approve these.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the above-mentioned facilities.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Lisa. So we have a motion to approve the high school, the middle school, Hope Valley, Ashway, and Charles Town sit teams. It was moved by Bill, seconded by Lisa. Any further discussion on that? No. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Or recusals? No? Okay, thank you, team. That's unanimous. So that leaves us with Cala and Richmond Elementary. And from what I'm hearing, the committee's position on this is effectively that it's a bit top-heavy with respect to staff. So our guidance to Jane is to please go back and, based on the dialogues we've had tonight, relook at that composition. And I think Sheila Grover made a good point. If you can't find additional parents to balance it out, perhaps it's remove some of the staff from that list. Does, I believe that would then close business letter D out, unless there are anything else from the committee on that? Thank you. I do not see anything. So I would like to close that out. And let's move on to business letter E.
Thank you. So this is special education and extended school year services update. This item was requested by Lisa McRusso, and Jennifer Durkin is going to be presenting this evening to review the impact of COVID-19.
So I hope this works. All right, I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see the screen? All right, good. So Jane had asked me, you know, to provide her with some information about our students and families and how they're wearing through this whole virtual learning. So I decided to put a visual presentation together for you. Jane has actually put a bitlet on the bottom. So if you have not had the opportunity to review and see some of the videos of the staff and the kids, please do so. I may share one with you just as an example tonight, but feel free to go through that at your leisure. So all of our special educators have created Google Classrooms, as well as embedding themselves in the general grade-level Google Classrooms as well. So all the resource teachers have created their own classrooms and then have our co-teaching with their grade-level peers. They provided daily schedules that are really providing consistency for the students and their families. Specifically, one of the questions was about our developmentally-delayed population. So we tried, the staff have really tried to keep the schedules, like morning meeting and things of that nature, pretty consistent for the kids. And you'll see in some of the videos that they're really thriving with that. Both our teachers and our support professionals are actively engaged in providing those lessons. So they'll have morning meetings, group meetings, and then some of our teaching assistant staff will go into what they call rooms to provide a one-on-one direct instruction with the kids while the teacher is actually doing some small group. And you will see some of that in those videos. They communicate daily with the families, and that has been essential. So they're doing that through emails, Google Meets, and Class Dojos. So that's across the district. In regards to the service delivery to the kids and young adults, it's all a small group and one-on-one. Very similar is that they're actually in school. It's very interesting to see them on these Google Meets. So we are all trying to follow the individual education plans of all the kids as best we can. But there are specific, particular goals that obviously cannot be implemented virtually. And an example of that would be some of our young adults that have vocational goals and have job coaches with our agency perspectives who cannot go into the community right now. We have had conversations and multiple meetings with perspectives, and the job coaches have gone on to those meetings. But those are particular goals and objectives that we are not able to implement due to COVID-19 right now, as well as some face-to-face physical therapies for some kids. I wanted to just share with you, this is a young man in our high school self-contained classroom inviting me to actually be in his classroom for the day. They have morning meetings, 8:30 between 9:00, and he sent me the invitation himself. So I just, I'd share that with you. It's really something to go in and see them all. So I just asked some of the staff to give me an example. This is an example of one of our high school self-contained classrooms, kind of giving you an idea of how they are kind of working together. You'll see some names at the bottom. They're both certified and non-certified staff. So the TAs and teachers are working together in creating like beautiful, really try to interactive lessons for the kids online. So that just gives you an example of what, maybe what one morning might look like for them. This is actually, this is actually a morning meeting that I was invited to attend. This is a high school self-contained classroom. They're working on their vocabulary. So just to give you an idea. And look, they're very happy. Just another example of both of the high school teachers creating lessons along with their teaching assistant staff. And actually, one of the teaching assistants actually created this lesson for the kids for that day. This is a slide of Ms. Denise Champney. She was a speech pathologist who works in our self-contained classrooms at the middle school, high school, and in our autism classroom at Charles Town. She has her own Google Meet. Our therapists also do, they'll jump into a group classroom, but they also do one-on-one sessions as well. This is our middle school self-contained, one of our self-contained classrooms, students with developmental disabilities, sharing that they do Google Meets, small group one-on-ones. They have schedules every day in their agendas. And you can see some, for some of the activities, that the parents are very, very, very involved in helping these kids get through, get through their virtual day. And they've been phenomenal. Just provided you a sample of what a typical day would look like in Ms. Braitman's room for those kids. A lot of outdoor activities to get them outside. This is our other self-contained classroom at the middle school. Again, just showing them all with their work. And this is, this is Mrs. Warburton. Again, they just have their daily schedules, try to provide as much structure as they can, especially students with developmental disabilities and autism thrive on schedules. So it's really important that we try to keep them as close as possible to what it would look like during their school day. look like during their school day. She gave you an example of her, of her day. This is a slide of our Cala staff doing a clinical team meeting where we have the BMA. We have actually our secretary, a couple of teachers, and a couple of BMAs collaborating on a program for their students. They meet frequently. We have clinical meetings with the clinical staff and social workers every Wednesday. They are in clinical meetings pretty much every day with the individual classrooms as So this is Mrs. McHugh's classroom from Richmond. It's a self-contained classroom with students with developmental disabilities. This has several different videos. I'm not going to share this one, but I would totally encourage you to go through these videos. They're quite telling of all the hard work that the kids and the staff are doing and these families. And this one in particular, this mom, this is particular, one of the young men is actually using his augmentative communication device to tell us that he does not want any more. Just another one of her classes. This is in our early sessions of this. So the kids are, you see, the lessons and the activities are getting a little more sophisticated than when we first started. This was a particular email that I wanted to share. This is a preschool student with autism and just communication with Janine Mankoff, the preschool teacher, and this mom, just sharing some of the struggles that she's having with him at home. And just sharing, you know, it's a little bit crazy, but also mentioned that she is the calm sea in his storm when he is home. Let's, just listening to his voice and listening to her sing. This is a very, this is Eric Dofana. He's our physical therapist who has been providing asynchronous and synchronous activities for the kids and their families. So you feel free to share that video. There's one I would like to share with you. Just quickly.
What we're going to do is get our bodies ready to do a little bit more exercise. And this is a warm-up for that. So the first thing that we're going to do is sing songs and turn our bodies to the side. So I need everybody to sit with their legs crisscross and get their hands comfortably on their knees, and then listen to the song. Here we go. Turn to the side and put your hands down. Turn to the side and put your hands down. Turn to the side.
Just an example. And then there's some also, some pictures of him working with the parents with the physical therapy at home, in their yards, in their walkers, and their specialized bikes. These next few slides are actually from the occupational therapy. One of them, she's showing you, she is in her own dojo class. She also goes into the self-contained classrooms and does Google Meets for her students. She's showing you an example of her giving some guidance to this young man doing some ADL skills in his home.
No one's going to go into the dryer.
His mom's helping him, as you can see.
I don't know if you can sit down for that, buddy, because you're going to be able to stand up and put him up there. Right? There you go.
She's also provided this video of a young man working on a vocational skill at home. She has a whole series of, this is a whole program that she's been doing with not only him, but many of them. So feel free to take a look at that. This is our Mr. Bishop doing APE at home, and those are his two children helping him out in his living room and just finding some things throughout his house and creative ideas and providing APE to those children and their families. I just wanted to share with you a couple of slides of our resource teachers who are providing Google Meets, one-on-one sessions, and small groups as well at all levels. Although my high school kids did not want to be photographed, this is our preschool. This is Mrs. Mankoff, and here we have our two teaching assistants and some of the kids here on a morning meeting. This is a Charlestown elementary resource teacher providing reading instruction to a couple of her kiddos. Same here. This is from Ashaway. She's working on a research project, actually. So just to let you all know, we have been providing IEP, virtual IEP and eligibility and re-eligibility meetings. We are doing them virtually either, you know, through Google Meets. We have done several phone conferences in order to stay in compliance. Parent participation has been phenomenal. And right now, myself, Mary Makovits and Mary Frill, my LEA coordinator, are LEA-ing every meeting to ensure that it is being implemented properly and the necessary paperwork is being completed. This is our extended school year. We are planning our extended school year program as we would every year. It will be virtual. It will be running from July 6 through August 6, and that's our typical timeframe. We will be running the five self-contained classrooms virtually throughout the district in addition to providing resource services to our students who meet the eligibility criteria. That will all be done through a Google Meet and Google Classroom. Related service provisions are going to be implemented as best we can, as outlined within the IEP. Right now, the services are and will be virtual unless there are certain restrictions that are lessened through the governor, and we can provide the safety procedures specifically for physical therapy. That's one of the areas that most of, a lot of the concern is for some of our needier students and parents. And I'm just so proud to say that every single one of our staff requested to stay with their kids throughout the summer. We haven't had to go outside for anything. So they're staying with their kids. We've decreased the amount of virtual time just by, and that was all from the parents. The parents are, as you can probably imagine, are getting a little tired at this point with these little guys and young adults who really, attention spans are difficult even when they're in the classroom, and now they're home and their parents are working. They're not, you know, their home-based therapy services are not being provided due to the social distancing and whatnot. So, but just very proud to share it with the great work that everybody's doing.
Thank you, and thank you so much. I'd like to open this to Lisa McCaruso, who initiated this. The floor is yours, Lisa.
Jen, thank you so much for putting this together and for all of the work that your team has done. I did watch all of the videos when you had sent this out earlier, and it was definitely the highlight of my week to see all that. But also to point out how much you've done and what you're doing at this stage of COVID this quickly. I know it feels like this has been going on a long time, and certainly it feels that way to the parents, but to have your curriculum and your delivery at this level this quickly, you know, mid-May, is impressive. And Charahoe has a reputation right now at RISIAC, amongst the groups I'm in outside Charahoe, of being a leader. So I want you to know that, and I want the community to know that. You pretty much answered all the questions that I had, and I had sent you a couple as well, and you answered those in some of your follow-ups as too. Two questions, one that I want to explore a bit more, and then one question that came in from a family to me earlier today. So I'll tell you, I'll give them both to you, and that way you can, you can think about them and answer them as appropriate. So a little bit about the parents. How are we or how can we support parents or students in homes that might not be as conducive to home learning as the examples that you showed in this? So clearly, these parents, I mean, they're all in, they're making it work. We certainly have some students with special needs in families that don't have capabilities, the resources, whether it's the human resources, the intellectual resources, the educational resources, or the financial resources to really make the students' IEPs work. So what can we do to help you help them is one question. And then a question that came in from a family today was about students that are immunocompromised, and regardless of the governor's plan to phase us back into school, how are you approaching students whose immune systems are compromised beyond what ours would be in terms of making sure that their education, even if we're supposed to phase in, if they are not necessarily appropriate to come back to school, are we going to be able to branch out and do some home education for those students while the others return?
Sure. So there are a lot of kids that are, families and kids that are struggling. Like I mentioned, I've been on IEP meetings pretty much daily. And, you know, the kids that are doing well with the, with the technology, it's going great. But there are several multiple families that we've had to reach out to. And just some of the things that we've done and what I've worked with, with the case managers, the special educators, and the building principals, is really taking a look at those individual cases. And we've had to modify some workloads for some of those kids. I just had a phone call from a parent the other day who's really, really struggling, and her husband's only home every other day. So, you know, speaking with Jeffrey Scanapieco, we kind of, you know, made a very individualized program for that family. And we're checking in with them more frequently, and it's going a little bit better. I'm not going to say it's perfect, but it is going better. We've been providing one-on-one instructional meetings with the kids who can't necessarily function in that group even on virtual, even though it's virtual. So they're doing individual sessions with those kids. We've been doing individual sessions with actually, with the parents. You know, not only just instructionally, but just trying to guide them through that it's okay. We're seeing a lot of behaviors at home, especially through all these Google Meets. And so we've been tapping into our school psychologists who will actually reach out to them and provide them strategies and working with them at home. And a lot of these families, you know, whether they have home-based services or not, they're needing some help. We've actually gone physically out to some of the homes, you know, ensuring that the social distancing and the Department of Health standards with, you know, the masks and whatnot, just having those face-to-face conversations rather than the computer with some of those families. We've sent Rich Longaluko out, and we've reached out to our SRO for some of these families that we really think that just need some wellness checks. It's very, very stressful. They're expressing it, and we just want to make sure they're okay. We have several students that are compromised. Again, that was one of my, you know, in speaking with Jane and developing the ESY program, and, you know, there's been a lot of talk around the state, well, let's try to have this population come back. And I have significant concerns. We have many medically fragile children. So the parents, I reached out to most of the parents, and we came to, you know, some agreement regarding that. Once things are lifted, or if parents are feeling like, you know, their children are not ready to come back, they do not want to introduce them, we have this format for some of them, and has worked very well. I think for those students and families, their therapies are paramount, and we're really trying to figure out how to help them. They're not physical therapists, they're not occupational therapists. Some of the students really need to be stretched, but there are guidelines, there are health guidelines that I need to follow, and so don't their medical organizations. So as soon as those are lifted and we get guidance, I've spoken to most, if not all of those families, and we will deal with them on an individual basis.
Jen, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Chambers.
Hi, Jen. Good evening.
Hi, Donna.
I too spent some time with this presentation this afternoon, and I am so impressed from all different levels. Not surprised at all at the creativity and the way you've, you all have put it together, the staffing and all that. But I was just wanting to compliment you, first of all. It's inspiring, it's impressive, and are you archiving these? Because you have such rich resources as you learn by going forward with the coronavirus. Are you archiving these for your own resources? Are the teachers being reflective of what works, what doesn't work? It's just amazing what you're doing.
Yes, actually, Donna, thank you. My staff are fabulous, so.
Thank you for that.
They're fabulous, all of them. That's why I wanted to share everything. Actually, we have several of our teachers that have been recruited by Rhode Island College to share a lot of their virtual learning with actually, with the students at Rhode Island College, especially with significant intellectual disabilities. So I'm very proud of that. We have two of our staff doing that.
Nice, nice. And we can internally use it as a resource also.
They're sharing everything. They're teaching me, actually.
Thank you, Jen. Well, they have good, good leadership. Thanks.
Glad they do. Thank you. Sheila Grover, I see your hand raised. I don't know if that's a carryover from an earlier question or if you have a new one?
No, that's the old one, so I'll un, I'll unmute it.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for Jen? Well, then, thank you so much for your time tonight, and thank you so much for the hard work you're doing. Keep up. It's a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay well, be well.
Thank you.
This brings us to business letter F, technology department services due to COVID-19. Jane, I can't hear you.
Thank you. This item was requested by Craig Luzon, and Sean Cole is available to answer any questions.
Do you want me to say?
The floor is yours. I'm going to hand it to Mr. Luzon first and let him take it from there. I don't know what the specific question was.
Well, basically, your report answered all the questions, Sean, so thank you very much for the report. I was just concerned, figuring the only pipeline to our students were these devices. How are they standing up? How are they going to stand up? Do we anticipate? I mean, you make reference to the seniors' batteries, some of them dying because they've had them since eighth grade. Well, the juniors have had them since eighth grade, too. Do we anticipate? Because I envision this possibly maybe going into the fall. So do you envision any problems or?
So, you know, with the regards to the senior batteries, the seniors are the only ones that have had the devices that long. We actually did a replacement of the 11th graders' devices when they were in 10th grade. So we couldn't really budget to replace all of them, plus the seniors were only going to be replaced for one extra year. So we had just kind of extended the life of that device. So it's really only the senior devices that are out of the warranty and. So it's really only the senior devices that are out of the warranty and having that extra hardware cost.
So other than that, no other problems? Do we anticipate any problems?
So we're budgeting for getting some new devices. I have devices we can continue to use. So as of right now, we kind of, we put a lot of effort into trying to get this rolling. And we've been putting a lot of effort into technology all like for the past six years really. So because of all the effort we've put into it, we're in pretty good shape. We made a couple of adjustments with some devices we're going to retire, some devices from the elementary schools that got us up to speed a little bit for our K, pre-K through fourth grade students. And we've just been kind of adjusting as we need to and trying to provide a business as usual. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a question from Bill Day.
I have a question, but I gotta comment first. I want everybody to realize what a great job Sean and his staff over there have been doing there. This is something that my understanding is we're, we're far, far and ahead of a lot of other school districts in their ability to, to do what we had to do. So I really hope that everybody that pays their taxes and, and the district realize that even though I'm not a great computer genius like Sean is, that I, that I really believe that we're really getting our money's worth with the, with the computer technology. Now the little, the question I have is just a kind of a little minor thing. We have about 39, 40 people on here, but I noticed the school committees members are spread throughout this list that I have here. Is there, is there any way that the school committee and administration could be bracketed at the top? Or is this just something that's not, not worth investigating?
So I think it's something that Zoom does and I actually don't know how to make that happen, but I will look into that for you.
Well, it's not a big deal. It's just, you know.
It would be cool if you could do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. David Stone.
I also just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly recognize Sean and all the technology folks, because I think they've done an outstanding job. And this presentation and this report unfortunately is just a bunch of numbers about computers and things. It doesn't have the adorable children like the last presentation. But all the, all the things that happened with the great teachers and the adorable children right now is happening because of the great technology stuff. And so it's, it's not quite as romantic, you know, but it's, it's really important stuff. And from the parents' perspective, even our younger kids having to jump in that weren't on the one-to-one, having to get devices for them, get loaners for them, get everything up to speed. It's been really seamless and it's worked really well. And any little glitches have been quickly taken care of. And it's just been really seamless for us. So thank you for some great work Sean.
And I wanted to thank Jane for having me follow Jen, who used technology very well and had that nice presentation. But I also want to recognize my staff. I have a lot of good people that work in the technology department. And if I ask them to do something or adjust what they need to do, they've been right on that and doing whatever they needed to do and it's been very helpful.
Donna Chambers. I can't hear you Donna. Donna?
Oh, thank you. Okay. I also, I also wanted to say my grandson showed me how I could look like I'm at the beach with Zoom. So I bet there's a way of getting us all on top. All right, thanks again Sean, I'm a big fan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee. I do want to keep us moving. Are there any final questions for Sean? Are we going to give him some, some time back this evening to go enjoy himself? No more questions from the committee?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Is that Barbara?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to raise my hand by star nine, but I seem to be failing.
Oh, well, then the floor is yours Barbara.
Thank you. I also want to thank the technical department, I think Sharon, who has done a really fine job. And I am so glad that we were basically prepared across the entire district, which a lot of districts were not. And I'm very pleased. And that was because of all the work done over the last six or seven years, not just the most recent. But my question for Sean is that is he, are you prepared for next year? If we have to shelter in place again for a number of weeks? Is everything, as far as you know, you have the equipment, you have the manpower to do this again on short notice?
Well, so actually what we're probably going to plan to do is not undo what we currently have going. So rather than try to collect all of these devices back into the elementary classrooms, we're going to have to wait until we know what's going to happen and then we'll adjust our plan as we need to. So right now I would say we're going to be prepared for whichever direction that it goes come the start of school on September. We'll make.
Thank you.
Make it work.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all. This brings us to business letter G.
So this is maintenance custodial work during COVID-19. And this item was requested by Bill Day and Susan Rogers will address any questions or concerns.
Thank you. I'd like to give the floor to Bill.
Thank you. I, I've read this report, very comprehensive, very in, in line with what I want to see. I don't really have any suggestions other than maybe or to save some paper, give us another report in a month with the, deleting the projects on here that have been completed and add any new ones that have come, come forward in the future. Because you know, I, I get around more so than I should probably with some of the things I'm involved in. And when I get questions about what we're doing over there and I want to be assured that I can tell us the people that are questioning this that yeah, we're not having our maintenance and janitorial sort of sitting around keeping Sean busy all day long over there technology building. So it's, it's important that I think the committee knows that we've got these individuals out there working for the best interest of the district. And they have a, a, a report with the completed work deleted and a new, new list made out. So maybe there'll only be one sheet of paper instead of two and one and a quarter or whatever it is. Yeah, so I, I don't have any questions or problems with it. I just wanted to have this information at my, my availability when I do get asked about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you Bill, appreciate it. Sue?
One of the things that I just wanted to comment on is there are no benefits to COVID. But one thing that we have noticed is normally in the summertime between vacations and having to prepare the schools, our custodial and maintenance staff are just straight out. But this has actually given us time to go in crevices of the building where, you know, we found it, we found some window sills that were beginning to rot. We never would have seen those in the normal course of our year. So we are going even one step further as we're finding these types of issues. We are addressing that and we have the time to do so. The other positive is we had in our budget for the next year, we had cut all the painters. So our custodial staff have done a lot of painting already in our schools and are going to be continuing to do that. So some of our schools are all looking so much better. And they've already started some of their summer cleaning too.
Thank you. Any questions on this topic for, for Sue? No, okay, great. This brings us to the last item in business, which is H Superintendent Search Update. This is a, a standing item on there and this is at the request of Donna Chambers. Anything specific Donna? No?
I don't think so. Did I put that on there?
It's a, it's a standing update, yeah.
No, I don't have any, no, I have nothing to say. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, team, I don't have anything to say on that either. I would like to move us forward to consent agenda items. Let me look it real quick on the minutes. I, I don't know if anybody needs anything pulled. Uh, let me see. Yeah, team, I, I don't see anything on the minutes that need to be, or the consent agenda items that need to be pulled for abstentions. Can I, I get an audible eyes, you know, comment if somebody needs something pulled?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Seeing there's nobody asking for anything to be pulled, I make a motion to move all of the consent agenda items.
Second.
Thank you. The motion was made by Craig to move all the consent agenda items and was seconded by Catherine. Those in favor? No, it's, it's a consent agenda, it's been moved.
Oh, salivate.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Abstaining or recusals? I hear nothing. And I don't see everybody, so I'm just going to say it's unanimous. If not, please give me an audible correction. Nope, okay, great. Then this moves to reports.
Thank you. Subcommittee Report. So first, the Health and Wellness Subcommittee actually met this afternoon at four o'clock and enclosed as a copy of their draft minutes from their last meeting, March 31st, 2020. Also, Necessity for School Construction Committee had a, a meeting on May 8th and attached is a copy of their draft minutes from March 26th. Cala CSI Community Advisory Board meets tomorrow, Wednesday, May 13th. For the superintendent, the interim superintendent's report. I am very pleased to introduce, and this gentleman is on the call. I'll make sure he's still there, he is. Introduce the new Director of Administration and Finance for the district. His name is Mr. Edward Draper. Likes to be called Ned. And Ned comes highly recommended by the interview committee. He is very experienced and highly qualified. He worked at North Kingston School Department for five years in the role. And from there, the last eight years, he's worked at RISD and as the Director of Academic Budget and Resources. And again, he is on the call, so I wanted to introduce him and give him an opportunity if he wanted to say a few words.
Thank you for inviting me. Also wanted to thank the committee, the interview committee, as well as the school committee for allowing me to join your team. I've been pretty impressed with what I've seen this evening. It seems, seems like everybody's adjusting to the new, new Zoom world. And I like the teamwork that I'm seeing and I'm really looking forward to getting started with the district. So thank you very much.
Outstanding. Well, thank you Ned, we appreciate you joining our team and we look forward to working with you. Although I will say that we are going to miss Sue immensely. She's an integral part of this team and, you know, I, I just can't say enough good things about her. So you, the bar has been set immensely high, but we're confident that you will be able to, to, to reach it. So thank you for joining us. Sue, I wish I could vote no on accepting your resignation letter again. But that's, that's no longer in our control. So we'll miss you. Thank you.
So Ned, we'll start July 1st and Susan has very kindly offered to be available for consultation. And I know they've already spoken a few times and that, you know, I know Susan will do everything to help Ned come on board and make a smooth transition. All right, next, Charlestown Elementary School. So I wanted to let you know that they've been nominated for a National Blue Ribbon Award. And they were nominated as an exemplary high performing school. The Mrs. Poor completed the application and just submitted it. So now we'll be waiting to hear, but I wanted to congratulate Charlestown Elementary School for their nomination. Next, Charahoe High School graduation. So I wanted to give you an update. Although there was a lovely article in the newspaper today that probably did it better than I will. I'll tell you that to begin with. What the students really do want though, and Mr. McKenzie has met with the student government representative group, they really want something in person next year. So when, when we are able to do that again, that will be definitely something that we will plan. And we're committed to that. In the meantime, what we are working on is filming a virtual ceremony. And that's going to involve having the students come by appointment individually to the school. And they'll be able to take their picture in front of the Charahoe Regional High School sign. And then that will be compiled into a virtual ceremony along with speeches and along with performance from the band and the chorus. And the idea is on graduation, on June 5th, that we're scheduling a parade of the students so that they can decorate their cars. They have to be with a parent. And then at specific time periods based on the alphabet, they'll be able to drive through the campus. I've worked with Mr. McKenzie, the EMA Directors for the three towns and the three police chiefs to talk about how we will do this. And I know the fire departments have also been recruited to help out and to help out with posting signs so that the students will be able to drive through and have that celebration parade. And then go home because at eight o'clock, the virtual ceremony, well, that, this is what I hope is, will be able to be watched while they're at home. So they'll be able to go home after the parade and then that's when it will launch, that they'll be able to see the virtual ceremony. You'll also may have noticed around town that there are being signs put up. And I know that's the high school staff that volunteered to do that. They did it beginning this weekend and those are going up to every student. So that's going to be in multiple towns, not just Charlestown, Richmond and Hockington, but all the towns that our students come from. And we're very happy to help them celebrate this. Very exciting year and it's certainly new and different graduation. So wanted to give you an update on that information. Also, under reports, the next thing was every year we have an academic fellow that we hire and that's contractual. And we're changing it for next year. And the academic fellow, the job description is in the packet and it's for a distance learning fellow. So worked with on this for a few months in terms of what we were visioning for what we would want the fellow to do in the future. They, really their goal in the past has been to help us be innovative. The past fellows have been to help us implement one-to-one. And I think the work that we've done just during virtual instruction really shows how that the fellows have been so instrumental in all of the work and how we've been prepared to be able to provide distance learning these past few months. So now we're going to be posting a new position for a fellow. past few months. So now, we're, um, gonna be posting a new position for a fellow, and again, this is for a distance learning academic fellow. And essentially, they're gonna help to develop a system, uh, professional learning for staff to help them grow, and, and for our district to grow in delivering distance learning.
All right. We have a question here from Donna Chambers.
Jane, is that position in addition to the two tech fellows we now have?
No, um, in our budget, we have only one fellow for next year.
And that fellow will be the distance learning fellow?
Correct. And it is funded, um, through our budget. We said that will be funded potentially through Title II?
Okay, that's disappointing, because they've been doing such a good job. Anyway, never mind. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Day.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, uh, why we're switching gears here, because we have a great technology program. We have, have, uh, technology in, in the, uh, Votech program and stuff like that. Why we, why we would be shifting gears and moving to, uh, a program that we may not need next year? Well, I, I would wanna be a little more optimistic that we're gonna, gonna, uh, put the technology district learning programs on the back burner and be back in the brick and mortar schools there. So, uh, I'm just a little, a little confused as to, as to having a little more, uh, information as, as to the justification for it.
Chair, do you want me to address that?
Yes, please.
So, the fellow position is, has really, um, been developed to really be something that's innovative, and I, and to specifically target a specific issue or something new that the district's been working on. So, um, prior to the tech fellows, we actually had an academic fellow who focused on math and the math curriculum, and, um, implementing a new math curriculum and helping us do the transition to the Common Core. And then after that, the new initiative that the district really started to work on was one-to-one. And that evolved even from those initial few years. Um, then Jessica Jeremiah, the first, uh, one-to-one fellow, um, took that position where she really, the very initial beginning was about, you know, what students would get laptops, and then the, what laptops would we choose, and developing the entire system of, um, training that has to happen when we give out the laptops, and developing our SIPA app list. So that was all in those first initial years. Um, and then we actually hired a second one, and that was really due to the fact that we were finding the next evolution of one-to-one was identifying personalized learning. How do we actually use now the tools to make sure that we're improving instruction for our students? And so the tech fellows evolved, and their position turned into more as coaches. So they worked as coaches with teachers, embedded professional development, to really help them figure out how to, um, provide, how to, um, implement formative assessments, and then use that assessment data to improve their instruction. So we've been doing this now, I believe it's six years, and I feel, I, I feel that just through our, um, most recent adventure with virtual instruction and distance learning, it's really all proved to fruition. I mean, it was, it was an excellent system that was initially put in place. It developed and grew, and the professional development for the staff grew, and now we're ready for that next, next thing. And the reason that I chose distance learning, and, you know, again, listening to people on the committee that were concerned that there was still needs for professional development for some staff, was that one of the big things that the high school has been working on for the last two years in various grants that I know have come before you, is that, um, that ladder to autonomy, that change in that high school experience where maybe it's not always gonna be a traditional classroom that students attend, but you're trying to provide more opportunities for students to be involved in internships, and to be involved in, in real-life experiences, and in other cases, also distance learning. So this is something that I think we wanna continue to explore as we've implemented distance learning the last few months. For some students, it has really been a game changer. So I understand that many students have struggled, absolutely, and that families find it difficult, but there are some students that are actually thriving. And there's also many students that are seeing some of the value, um, in that, in their classrooms, they're realizing now, they really have to step up their game, because they're, just like right now on a computer, you're just by yourself, listening to yourself. If you're in chorus, for example, um, you know, you're not now part of the whole group, listen, um, hearing everyone around you. You kind of, you can hear them, but you hear yourself even more pronounced because you're by yourself, and it helps you to improve your game. So I just think it's something that, A, we wanna continue providing professional development to the staff, but we wanna be able to think about it. What are some of the benefits that have we learned in the last few months, and how can we capitalize on those in the future?
Okay. Uh, we have a question from David Stahl.
Yeah, it wasn't so much a question, as I wanted to reiterate what, what Jane kinda landed on at the end of her comments, which is, you know, I'd like to, to think of that as a, uh, synthesizing virtual learning with in-person learning going forward. Uh, how to, how to blend the two, how to put them together, and particularly some of the areas where it's not as straightforward, like the arts, or combining virtual learning experiences with in-person labs, or, you know, a virtual experience that has some on-campus experience and synthesizing the two. I think those are gonna be all the kinda questions we're gonna, we're gonna wanna explore next year. Um, as we, we say, what were the benefits that we learned here, and then we're going back to normal, but normal now can be enhanced with some of this. So it's really a synthesis of the, of the virtual learning and the in-person or on-campus learning, and I think that's a great direction to go with that position. So, I'm in agreement, Jane.
Thank you. Uh, Craig, move on.
Uh, yes, Chair. Um, I think there might have been confusion earlier with, maybe even on Donna's part, uh, the, we didn't eliminate both tech fellow positions. We only eliminated one, correct? Jane?
We have one academic fellow position in the budget for next year.
But we still maintained one of the technology fellows?
No, we only have one academic fellow. So, for a few years, we had two. Before that, we always had one, and we just added a second one the last few years. Now, next year, we're only going back to one, and that one will be this distance learning academic fellow. The one-to-one technology fellows were not in the budget for next year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, please continue.
And the last item is just an update on our grab-and-go meals. Um, and Mrs. Rogers has really been leading this work, um, with Lee Rainey from Chartwell. Beginning on Monday, May 18th, we are gonna be providing meals equivalent to seven days, um, a week for family pickup. They're gonna only have to come three days a week to pick up the meals on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. But when they come on Monday, they're gonna get breakfast and lunch for both Monday and Tuesday. When they come on Wednesday, they're gonna get it for Wednesday and Thursday, and when they come for, on Friday for pickup, they'll get breakfast and lunch for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we're expanding the number of meals, but also lessening the number of times they need to drive to the campus. And, um, last but not least, we have a coming event, the Skills USA Graduation Night 2020. It's Wednesday, May 27th, uh, 2020. It is virtual event, and it will start at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Uh, school committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. We do have a, a legal opinion from last time, um, and, uh, I believe John Anderson is still on, and, uh, legal opinion was requested by, uh, George Abbott. John?
Are you ask, are you calling on me?
Yeah, sorry, John. Um, I, I just wanted to make sure you're still there.
I am.
Thank you.
I have, I have been. What's CG?
George, uh, I wanna give you an opportunity to ask John, uh, for any clarification. He wrote a summary.
Question quite clearly. I don't agree with the answer. Seems like the local property taxpayers are always taking it on the chin. It's just another example, but that's all I have to say.
Thanks, George. And thank you, John, for the detailed opinion. Appreciate the, uh, the background on that. I know that that, uh, does come up periodically, so it's nice to have, um, that, uh, very well articulated for the, the committee. Um, I'm Donna. You have a request for future agenda items?
I do. I would like to continue the conversation about the academic fellow and the support, um, through the personalized learning, the distance learning, the tech support, professional development. I think that's an awful lot to put on one position. So I would like to just see how that will work, will lay out.
Okay. Thank you. Is that clear enough, Jane, for the, the request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I have, uh, Lisa, Clay, and then Bill.
Chair, I'd like to discuss, um, virtual high school options for, um, summer acceleration for students that, um, may want to have an opportunity to, to do additional coursework. Um, Jen did a phenomenal presentation of how we're meeting the needs of our students with special needs, um, but we also have another pocket of students that are high-performing that would, um, are interested in more opportunities, and I think that Craig and Mario and Andrea actually have very started research on this.
Great, thank you. Uh, Clay?
I was just interested in an update on, we were gonna talk about streetcar damn desire, and that seemed to have been dropped.
Uh, it did not get dropped.
Okay.
It is, it is moving forward to, as per the policy. Um, uh, we have a policy that, um, allows for petitioning the removal of, of specific works from our curriculum, and, yeah, um, if you're not speaking, just mute your, your device, please.
Yeah, I got it.
And then, um, so anyways, it's, it's, it's moving through the process. I don't know where it's at in that process, but it, it has not been dropped. Um, and if it's not resolved through that policy, it will ultimately, um, land before this committee.
So, um, part of that was, um, it sounds like the process is a process of censorship. Um, are, is there gonna be a discussion at the school committee before we get to that point?
The policy, and I'm going by memory, allows for petitioning the removal of an article, and that petition then goes through multiple, um, uh, multiple stages. And my understanding of reading the policy is that it could be resolved, um, at any one of those stages, um, and it's only the final stage, it would come to the committee because somebody would petition, um, to go to the committee because they had not, um, reached a conclusion that they were happy with. Meaning it, if streetcar damn desire is not removed, and, um, Mr. Stahl's not satisfied, then ultimately it lands before the committee through the petition process.
But I thought that a committee member asked for that to be on the agenda, not necessarily to have a censorship issue, but to have a discussion about the issue.
The policy, yeah, so, uh, Donna, you can't.
You've adopted, you have adopted a policy as to how these matters are to be handled, and, um, the, what's happening is that if Mr. Stahl wishes to pursue it, and again, I don't know where it stands in the process, but he has every right to pursue it, and if it is not resolved prior to it becoming to the school committee, it will. So this is not a policy of censorship. This is a policy of petition, and indeed, it vindicates the First Amendment right of Mr. Stahl to address this issue.
But it, it sounded like it wasn't necessarily, and maybe, I don't wanna speak for David, but it didn't sound like it was a petition to censor. It was a, um, request to put it on the agenda to discuss.
And, and again, there's, you've voted as a body on a process as to how to do that, just like you have a process for putting, um, other, asking for legal opinions, and all that is being requested here is to follow, is to follow that process. Just like we wouldn't, for example, allow a school committee member to say, "I wish to bypass, I'm not happy with my student child's discipline in the third grade at Charlestown Elementary. I don't wanna deal with that superintendent. I don't wanna deal with the principal. I wanna present it directly to the school committee." Again, we're simply following the process that this body voted on.
Okay, fair enough. So if he was interested in talking about that petition process, he should have requested that on the school committee agenda?
And again, it, we have, if he should, we, he has the policy, and he should follow the policy. And once he exhausts the policy, which is, by the way, the same as our appeal policy, then it will come before the school committee. It's not a question of, it's not a question of, it won't. It's a question of, it is up to him when he wishes to pursue it. So if he's pursuing it, and I'm not involved in the administrative level, if he's pursuing it through the superintendent, um, through, uh, you know, once it gets past the superintendent, it will come to the school committee. It's a question of, of, he, he's in charge as to when this will happen.
Okay.
Just like when a parent is unhappy with their child's discipline, they don't get to say, "I wanna bypass Ms. Daly because I'm on the school committee, and I want my child's situation looked at right away by the school committee." We follow the process.
Yeah, the part that I thought was a little different with this is that the school committee can set community standards, and so what you're telling me is that we have to follow petition process to set community standards.
We also have a part.
Fair enough. I didn't bring it up, so I'll let David bring it up, if, if this is something he wants to pursue.
Yeah, just, um, I, I see, um, Bill, David, and Sheila. And I, I do wanna say, we're not discussing this topic tonight. I know Clay was asking for a clarification on a previous question, and that makes sense. Um, I wanna give the floor to David next, and then Bill, um, but, uh, we're not going into a discussion on it. It wasn't posted, so I just wanna make that clear to folks. David, the floor, sure, sorry.
Thanks, Ryan. And I think it's, it's important that we give it a few minutes of clarification as to why it wasn't there, because some expected to see it there. So I, I do think that, that it warranted a few minutes of conversation. So, uh, to clarify and answer the question, um, for, for Clay, yeah, and, and, and I would, I would just speak to what Mr. Anderson has said, that it is, it is different because it was not a, a parent issue, uh, just with a child or disagreement, that sort of thing. It was a policy issue, as great, as Clay, uh, mentioned, uh, setting community standards. So, I, I am, uh, going to, uh, go through the process from the parent's perspective as the procedure, um, that, that's been adopted, uh, outlines. So I did not know last week, even though I had met with administrators about it, I did not know there was a policy until the, the board meeting, um, when I brought it up. So, I was informed there was a policy. So now I will walk through the policy so we can have that, uh, experience, and I can learn through, through the experience, and then I'm sure it will come back to us. Um, and certainly after I've walked through that policy, uh, I'll, I'll be in a better position, Clay, to bring the policy to us as a board agenda item, so that we can look at the policy, 'cause it was, it was done when I was in high school. Uh, last revision. So, we'll look at it again after I've understood the policy and the process.
Thank you all, and thank you for the clarification and the, the questions on it, because it was brought up at a public meeting last time, so that's good. Uh, Bill Day?
Yes, uh, I'd like to have, uh, a committee request going forward. I just wanna give you a little, a little reasoning why. Uh, I'm a member of the Richmond Emergency Management. I'm a member of the Richmond Emergency Management, also a school committee member to the school safety team. So, I've reviewed five of the school safety teams so far, and it's obvious to me that there is some wake-up calls that need to be directed towards some of our building administrators. I've talked to Mr. Roddy, who has got extensive background in school safety and the respect that he's, was in Newtown after the tragedy there. And he has agreed to give the school committee and staff a presentation. So, I'd like to have that on the next school committee agenda so that we can direct and create development day or whatever to have Mr. Roddy or some other day that's convenient for everybody so that we can have a better understanding of where school safety is and what our shortcomings are at Charahoe. So, that's my request.
Thanks, Bill. Any further school committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions? Okay, now, before we adjourn, Craig, if you could make the motion, but before you do, if you would not mind recognizing the donations. I know that was what you were going to go for in the consent agenda, and I don't want to pass that up. So, if you would please make the motion and acknowledgement.
Well, if you can bear with me, I just closed my entire packet up, figuring we were going to go for adjourning. Unless you want to do it, if it's right in front of you, Chair.
Perfect. So, before we adjourn, I do want to recognize donations from Wood River Health Services. Dr. Tiffany Albeck and Helen Bell of 250 dental smile bags, which include dental supplies and reminders. Those are to be distributed with grab-and-go meals since many preventative visits have been canceled due to COVID-19. In addition, we'd like to recognize the donation from Stop &amp; Shop. James Mokay of 500 paper bags valued at $30 to Richmond School to be used to gather personal items of students at the end of the school year. Thank you very much for our community members who support us like this. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Awesome. Second, I'm sorry, I know "still moved" came in, seconded from Lisa. Perfect. Any discussion? Thank you. Any closed abstentions or recusals? No, thank you. All right, awesome. Be safe everyone.